Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board for the year 2021. Let me first wish everyone a very happy holiday since we won't be seeing everyone again this year. And let me also point out that this meeting is being held in the auspices of Governor Kathy Hochul, who suspended the open meetings law to allow public officers such as ourselves to meet virtually. In that vein, may I first confirm that every person is alone or without anyone trying to influence their vote, just as I am. Ms. Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Ms. Wasser?
Yes, I'm alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm alone.
And Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
Please join me as we salute the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is a new public hearing for Jennifer Mastroni and her husband. This is for seeking site plan approval for an animal husbandry use specifically at the keeping of hens. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion and Dexter?
I'll second Chris Oliver.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Jennifer, welcome back.
Hi.
So we got some new materials from Jennifer today. We discussed this briefly. Everyone had the opportunity, I believe, to go out and take a look personally. I actually drove out and went to the adjoining property owner's house, took a couple of pictures. You've seen those. And Mrs. Vertulo, the adjoining property owner is taking pictures as well. It's a very neat sight as far as I could see the entire time that I was there. I didn't hear a sound from the hens or anything like that. In addition to that, Jennifer and her husband sent a 3D version of what it would look like with the proposed fence around it. It's a wooden stockade fence on three sides. There'd be chicken wire open on one side, so there'd be plenty of fresh air for the hens as they run around. This also extends the run. And I also want to, I believe I can confirm, Jennifer, that there's no roosters, just hens, correct?
No roosters.
And the structure itself, when I walked up to it, it comes to about my nose, I think, somewhere through here. So it was maybe five and a half to five and three quarter feet. The fence proposed is six feet, so it will probably occlude the view. Unfortunately, from the neighbor's viewpoint, it may be also including the view of the woods behind it, but you'll still see the trees above rather than just the woods if it's approved. Is there anything you want to add to this, Jennifer? I just sort of rambling.
You hit it on the head. It's not too much to describe. You pretty much described it.
Well, we've all seen pictures now. It's painted a sort of jaunty sky blue.
It is.
It's sort of like a, it's like a double decker condo in some ways. That's the way I describe it.
That's perfect.
And they, I have to say, the hens were, as I said, pretty quiet. This is one of my pictures that I took from the back, from the neighbor's back deck. I also want to just here interject because I told Mrs. Vertulo, she has like a really neat and tidy property. It's like one of the nicest you see out there. The garden is perfect. It made me want to gnash my teeth at mine how bad mine looks compared to hers. She vaporized it. But there you can see the two sides to the coop currently. And you see the finston area and you can see kind of a run down the line. That's the run kind of parallels the clothing line with the clothespins you can see on it. So if there's, if I've given enough background, let me start with Ms. Moss, any comments?
No, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
Um, no, not really. They are very nice little hens.
Thank you. I love them too.
Ms. Wasser, comments?
Um, I have a question. If the coop comes up.
Oh, you're cutting out Stephanie.
Yeah, you disappeared there for a moment. Sorry.
If the coop comes up. What?
You can tell you're frustrated.
I'm hungry. I, I'll have a chance to put in a laptop, so I'll deal with it after the committee.
She, she wants to know how high up the coop comes to.
Well, the fence is, how tall is the fence?
The fence is six feet and the coop is anywhere from five and a half to five and three quarters. It was somewhere around here.
Okay, and it looks like it's an upward slope. So I just want to make sure our neighbor is.
The slope from the neighbor goes up pretty steeply and pretty quickly. So that from six feet, as I said, it should, it should completely screen most everything.
And is the fence in its natural state or are you painting it?
So Jennifer, the question was, are you going to leave the wood for the fence in a natural state or are you going to paint it?
Um, it, it doesn't really matter to us. We can do either.
It's cheaper than at age, I can assure you, than to try to paint it and keep it painted. I, I.
That sounds great.
Well, it's also, I, I think what Stephanie's, I think what she was sort of getting at too is if you leave it in a natural state, it's going to be more blended better with the environment.
Perfect. I'm all about that.
Anything else, Stephanie? Mr. Waters, any comments?
No, I think that you've answered them all. And the height was the only thing, whether you would see any of the coop. But it looks like, like you said, that you're sitting down a little lower, looking uphill. And then the height of the fencing versus the height of the coop. So I think it's going to be screened.
And Mr. Oliver?
I have no further comments. I, I think the fence will do fine.
I know that you drove by as well. So one of the questions Ms. Moss had for us at the agenda meeting was whether there should be some kind of landscaping required on the west side of the fence. And to tell you the truth, you're not going to have, if I looked at where the fence is proposed correctly, it's going to start dropping in between there pretty quickly. And we all know that it's very difficult to plant things on a slope because the water drains too quickly. So I wanted to just throw that in there. I believe Mrs. Vertulo signed up to speak, but she hasn't called in yet, maybe?
Correct.
Okay.
There's someone in the waiting room. She could be using a different name.
Yes. Anybody know who Morgan Montana is?
No, it sounds like a character from a Kurt Vonnegut novel. Sorry.
Well, the, I mean, the, the rule, the procedures are you have to let us know ahead of time if you're using a different name because we don't want to let people on live television.
Correct.
Who are not registered. So.
Is there a way to, is there a way to communicate with, with, do you chat with someone?
I try chatting with people in the, in the waiting room and they, they usually don't respond, but I will try.
Um, if not.
Because I was thinking maybe somebody set it up for her.
I thought she was going to call in, actually.
Well, this is not a caller.
Stephanie's saying something.
You're muted.
You're muted now, Stephanie.
Oh, is it, is Stephanie the one who's, who's Morgan Montana?
You're not Morgan Montana.
Okay. This is a great way to end the year.
Stephanie, can you unmute? Hello?
Yeah. So, hold in, but there's echo because of the background. Where I can turn off. There's a lot going on here.
Yes, Stephanie, if you call in.
Right.
Um, and you mute yourself here and turn down the volume, listen on the phone, we'll be able to see you and hear you.
All right. So I was muted and I did turn down the volume.
But the call never came through.
Yes, I, I hear you're seven eight one or seven one eight.
Yeah.
Cell phone. It did, it just came through, but it went, it clicked off.
Because I, I turned it off. I thought there was a celebration.
Oh.
Mute again and try calling in again. Uh, if there's anyone watching us, please excuse us while we have technical difficulties, as they used to say.
My apologies.
So it's your call, Michael, if.
Well, we could, we could adjourn this to January 5th. And then plan to close that night and try to correct this issue. Because I don't want to have a neighbor not be able to speak if that's what they came in for.
Uh, let's see what happens here. Because there's a couple of phone numbers.
All right, the seven eight one is Stephanie, right, Stephanie? And the two oh one number, would that be you, Mrs. Vertulo? Morgan Montana? You're muted.
You're muted.
Hi, Eric. I'm from New York State Solar Farm. I'm representing Andrea Baccio for the solar project.
Thank you. Then.
Mystery solved.
Okay, so there's a two oh one, two five zero, seven eight six five number. Mrs. Vertulo, is that you?
Oh, it's Lou.
It's Lou.
Okay. All right. So do you guys?
Meeting ever.
Do you guys want to?
That's George Brad. Yeah, he's listening, you know, from my firm.
Thank you. So do you guys want to close the public hearing tonight and consider taking action at the January 5th meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't hear any comments.
Let the record show, there's no one in attendance to speak about the history of the application.
If we close it though, somebody could not speak at the next one. Is that correct?
No, they, they can't speak, but they have 10 days in which to offer a public comment. Or seven days, I'm sorry, seven days to offer more public comment. I mean, here's what I want to say. We, we had, we've received public comment from the neighbor, Mrs. Vertulo. Um, and I have responded to her directly. I explained that animal husbandry is a permitted use in this district, but just requires site plan. So it doesn't require a special use permit. Um, and it would be the responsibility of the planning board to make certain that we would provide screening if that's required, which this is sort of a non-residential use, we'll call it. It's in a residential neighborhood, but it's a permitted one. But the applicant themselves have proposed a fence. And I believe in one of the letters, emails we got from Mrs. Vertulo, she talked about scent and sound. But it's important to remember that the fence will also help block sound. You know, sound bounces back as those of us who've been doing this a while know, and Dexter and I had to learn this a long time ago. It'll also help with any, attenuates the travel of scent and odor. That noted, most of the wind in this area comes from the west and blows to the east. So that would tend to help mitigate if there are any odors as well. Last, when I went and looked, I mean, I didn't smell anything. It is the winter. But I didn't smell anything because I wanted to take all of her comments seriously. Um, but everything looked really neat and tidy that I could see. So, um, and by the way, I did not let Ms. Mastroni know that I was coming. I did not call in advance. I decided would surprise them. No one was there either. I knocked on their door. So the both the neighbors were gone, or both of them were gone. So there was no way for her to go out and say, I'm going to clean everything up real quickly before, you know, Mr. DeFrico. So, um, that's why I did sort of a surprise visit. Um, Tad may be frowning because I probably violated the law now that I think about it, but I did at least knock on the doors first. So.
Mrs. Vertulo gave permission for you, any board member to be on.
Oh, that's right. She did. She did. And, and actually so did Jennifer. So I wasn't breaking the law. Thank heavens. Okay. So, um, then I think it's okay to go ahead and close the public hearing with the proviso that we will allow seven more days for comment. Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. We just got a chat from her. So make it a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing with the exception of seven days for written comments.
Perfect, Chris. Thank you.
I'll second that and Dexter?
Need further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. See, that's why it's good to raise your hand. I can see Stephanie's hand even if we can't hear her. Jennifer, we'll see you on the fifth. In the meantime, have a great holiday season. I saw that you had, you already have decorations up and everything, so I think you're planning to have a nice one. So enjoy and have a happy new year celebration as well. We'll see you on the fifth.
Thank you guys so much. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Boom. Bye.
Bye. The next item on the agenda is another new public hearing. This is for, basically this is to refile a prior subdivision that was approved back in 2007. It was inadvertently, uh, the lines were dissolved. We finally figured out a way to get everything resolved. I will also note that as is in the resolution, that we're prepared to entertain tonight, that construction has started on the site already. So we're trying to move this forward so they can continue the construction rather than be delayed the whole time. So Megan, a motion to open the public hearing.
Don't move, Stephanie Wasser.
Perfect.
Second, Rob Waters.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you. And by the way, better living through modern technology. I can hear you better through your cell phone than we can through Zoom tonight. So.
I, I think there's something wrong with my laptop. I will get it checked out.
Oh, I, we, we hear you perfectly now. So, Mr. Kaufman, is there anything you want to add tonight about, I mean, this is essentially, we're just reapproved or re, we have to hold a public hearing because this is a new, technically a new subdivision, but it was already gone through Seeker. All the analysis is done beforehand. It had its approvals. It got approvals for construction permits from DCDPW, all of it. So we're just sort of legalizing this back into existence.
Um, thank, thank you all for expediting this. I appreciate the effort on the behalf of the board to put this through so quickly. I also, I, I went through the conditions with TAG earlier this afternoon. And if those are necessary before I can file the MYLAR, then I'll get it done tomorrow, you know. But if any of those can be waived, then I'd like to hear it, but I do understand. I, I know what the date of the survey was. It's Bastille Day 2005. Uh, so, uh, you know, that's easily added to page one. The rest of it is all on page two. So if I have to take it back and have it corrected, okay, if I can have the engineer and the surveyor, or actually just the engineer come on up and add that, that would be great too. Um, because I've already had everybody but Mr., but Mr. Dupree.
Me, me. Yep, yep. I, I believe that that's something that can be worked out with you, Pete and Tad tomorrow by phone call first. If you guys can discuss this. So we're going to leave the conditions in now. I mean, they, they do need to be there. Um, you do have to show the access road that it's on, that it's not just a, I looked at the code and subdivision. So you're supposed to show the roadway that it connects to. That's just a matter of adding lines and labeling it County Road 37, uh, North, uh, North Cross, sorry, uh, road. The other is in the upper corner, there's a monument that's missing. At the corner, it didn't print out correctly and there should be a monument shown. As Tad would say, that if you didn't put it in there and she would say, where's the monument, you could say, well, it's not shown on the plan. We don't have to. I don't think you would do that, but that's why we want to make sure everything is on there correctly. And there's no legend for the monument. All those seem small to me, but I know there's a issue about adding things after signatures. So if you, the three of you can just discuss it, that would probably help first thing in the morning. But just so you know, I'm around all day tomorrow, ready to sign. And I have, I have a six o'clock Zoom meeting that I've got to lead tomorrow night, but a big one. Otherwise, I will be, tell me to be there at 11:00 AM. I'll be there at 11:00 AM. Tell me to be there 8:45. I'll be there 45 this morning. And Friday, I'm available too. I'm available Friday. I'm available Monday. I'm available. I'm available, available. Just let me know.
Um, I, I left a message for Pete on his cell phone as well. So Pete, if, if he can call me back first thing in the morning, because I'll be, I'm heading up to Duchess anyway to take care of a lot of business. So Pete, if you don't mind giving me a shout first thing, I can sort it out with you.
And Pete, I believe is listening and he's muted right now, but he, he can hear. So, um, and if you have a problem reaching him tomorrow, just let me know. So do I have any comments from the board or anybody? Ted, Pete?
No, I don't have any comments at this point. Ted, we talked about it, you know, today. So we'll talk, I guess we can talk the ludum mar.
Victoria, is there a, an issue that I need to be aware of of any kind? I think that page two is signed by the Department of Health, uh, but nobody else. I, I really don't know how to deal with that.
Lou, what I'll say is the fastest, most expedient way for you to get this done while avoiding more discussion is to just get everything reprinted and signed. Right. Um, if not, we can have some phone calls tomorrow about where we're at.
Right. If, if it can't be corrected directly, then I, I'll fix page two. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'll get it.
I mean, if it was just a date, it'd be one thing, but they have to actually come in and draw the lines to the roadway and draw a roadway.
Right. Well, yeah, I, I went over that with the, with dates to close. So page two, we understand what it needs to be corrected. If, and on page one, I know the date of the survey is.
That can just be added in, I believe. It's just a date.
Uh, right. And I have the survey with me. So, you know, if I can get, you know, if I talk to Mike and he's okay, but then I'm just going to, if it's the regular, with, with, with Bolzoro, I will fix that to the existing MYLAR and then I only have to deal with page two.
Lou, 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 let's talk about this tomorrow because.
Very good.
That it's hard for me in the abstract to, to understand and.
Right.
Oh, no problem.
For everyone else, the issue is that the Department of Health already signed the MYLAR. Lou was hoping that when I signed, he could just get it right off to where it needs to go because he needs to reassure his bank. It's hoping to be an ongoing project, that it didn't somehow fall aside because he's spending their money right now under construction. So understandable concerns. At any rate, we will work something out and we'll solve this no matter what. Don't worry. Um, if there's no, there's no other comments from the board, which I didn't think there would be because it's already approved. And then no one from the public signed up, then Megan, a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, Rob Waters?
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. And Vice Chair, I gave you this charming lovely resolution because you were there when we first approved it.
This is true. Resolution granting subdivision plot approval for Jeffrey Grove's estate. Like a walk down memory lane. Resolution number 2021-54A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves subdivision plot authorized to the chairman or has authorized designate to sign the subdivision plot after compliance with the following conditions. Payment of all fees and escrow, revision of the subdivision plan as follows. One, include a field survey date in the surveyor's certification. B, pick and label the access county route 37. C, add the corner marker symbol to the legend. D, revise to include the northerly most corner of lot 26.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you, Stephanie. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. Okay, Lou, tomorrow morning. Wow, wow.
Thank you all for expediting this. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. See you tomorrow. Next item on the agenda, Chestnut Mobile, which is located at the intersection of Violet Avenue and Promelbo Road. Its specific address is 110 Violet Avenue. They had just been before us for their new signage. They had wanted to do, change their monument sign. This is one that's right there on 9G or Violet Avenue. As it turns out, it was very difficult for them to deal with Department of Transportation because it's in their right of way. And rather than trying to, well, the sign they proposed is actually much prettier. It's a monument sign that looked nice with stone base, et cetera. But they were having, it was taking too long with DOT. Let's leave it at that. So what they've instead proposed is an insert that would go in where the letters are now. Councilman Kretnik, it's going to shed, that's what it will look like. The signage is code compliant because we allow LED signs for prices and temperature, temperatures as well. So they changed both of them so much. So does anybody have any questions or comments? There being none, I believe this is Mr. Waters' maiden voyage to read a resolution.
Yes. Resolution recommendation for in suance of sign permit pursuant to the town code section 108-24.3A 4D. Uh, resolution number 2021-56. Whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue, the sign permit for Chestnut Mobile Group based on the sign permit application submitted by Carrie Kennedy for the property owner GTY New York Leasing, Inc.
Done like a pro, Rob. Done like a pro.
Second, Oliver.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request by Andrea Ocho. I'm pronouncing that correctly and I hope I am. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator. Um, and this is located at 38 Hyler Drive. This is in a, another historic state's district. Um, but we don't think it's going to be any kind of detriment to the resources that are listed inside there. It's not really going to be visible from many places at all. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Montana, do you want to add anything? I, we feel like we made you stay here all this time. You may want to just say something. It's up to you.
No, it's fine. I'm, I'm interested to see how your, how your board works over here. Um, all, I'm, I'm here to do is answer any questions that you have about the solar system. Um, the, the nitty gritty is, can give you the address of the home, but I can tell you that the solar system is going to be on the back of the home.
Right.
Visible from the road. Um, the panels are all black. There's 30 of them. Um, and we are abiding by the fire codes here with this design, allowing an 18 inch uh, drop from the ridge of the roof and 18 inches along the side and a three foot walkway along the north side of the roof there for the fire department to be able to vent the roof should they need to. Um, it's a standing seam roof, so no penetrations. And then you'll see there's a 60 foot trench there along the gravel driveway to the main service panel, which is located at the end of the driveway.
Um, so just so you know, Ms. Montana, the board is intimately familiar with solar arrays. We were actually the first town to institute a law so that specifically for big solar farms. So that instead of having to come through on the uses of our charts for utility, public utility, we actually created our own zoning just for solar farms. So, and that's even been revised since then, since our first one, we've refined it a little bit more. Because the town's interested in pursuing alternative energy sources. In addition, um, our vice chair, Ms. Dexter, used to work in the solar industry. And Councilman Kretnik, who you can't see, but is directing this, and his wife is actually on the board. Um, they install solar panels themselves and had to go through the same review process. It's just that because we are in a historic overlay district, we have to give a little extra level of scrutiny. But to be honest with you, the board has long taken the position that there should, if we can't mitigate some sort of horrible thing that could happen to a historic view shed, there's got to be a way to do it. We need to have these, if we're going to hit the governor's or the last governor's goals for the energy uh, efficiencies that we're supposed to be hitting by 2030, it's going to take more than just solar panels, but that's at least, every step is in the right direction. So.
Absolutely.
By the way, where, where are you calling in? Where you, where you located when you said how we do it over here?
Um, so I work for New York State Solar Farm. So we're just across the river in Modena.
I don't know that, but that's okay.
Oh, yeah. That's where the, uh, the skydive is, the, um.
Exactly. Yes, I have the ranch is there. Uh, we're just south of New Pauls, maybe 10 minutes.
Oh, okay. It's a really little bitty town. That's why I haven't seen it before. Sorry.
It's like a Hannaford and, you know, it's, it's not even really like a town. It's really just like a, a little strip of road.
It has a firehouse.
It does have a firehouse. Yep. Um, we're right on the corner of 44, 55 and 32.
Yep.
Oh, well, then I know the area. I've been there. I just, no, no, I was in the town.
You blinked.
I blinked too fast. Exactly.
Welcome, welcome to this side of the river from Larive Gosh, where you live. Um, at any rate, anybody have any questions or comments, concerns? I didn't think so. So Chris, you have this resolution?
I do. Resolution number 2021-57. Whereas, request for site plan waiver has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Andrea Baccio to install roof mounted photo voltic panels on an existing single family home. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of the site plan received by the planning department on December 3rd, 2021.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And Ms. Montana, just for your edification, the process is a little different if it's going to be ground mounted versus roof mounted. I don't know if you guys do that. I assume you do.
We do, yes.
But under our code, we do require, uh, some potential screening if it's, uh, depending on what view is. Um, but, uh, usually we try to accomplish that with evergreens or if it's, if the view is looking down so that they would grow and disguise it to block it. If it's going to be, the view would be, say, at eye level or even looking up, then we try to do something really inexpensive like precipia that will form a bramble. You know, things like that, because we want to make sure that we don't occlude the actual solar penetration onto the panels at all. So that's why whenever we do the screen, we make sure that there's not going to be too much shadow cast, et cetera, et cetera. So. But, um, we like to work, we like to work with solar applications. So nice to meet you. Have a very happy holiday.
You too. Thank you for the time. Appreciate you all.
Of course.
Um, well, Will, um, that, so that's been approved. Is there, are you in touch with Kathy, who is the permitting, uh, head of permitting in our office in order to, to provide that? Okay, great. Okay, excellent. All right. Thank you so much.
We're fishing over here, I promise.
I love it. I love it. Sometimes I've got to drive all over three times in order to.
No, we know. It's, it's a, it's a lean tight team over here. I promise.
Yeah, I can see that. Yeah, I can see that. Thank you all so much. I hope I can do more jobs in Hyde Park.
We do too. Welcome back if you can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
The next time I'm on the agenda is an additional site plan waiver request. This is for an already installed, I can't help myself, it said hot tub. Sorry. I'm from the seventies back when those were first kind of began. And from first, you couldn't just say hot tub. It had to be hot tub.
Hot tub.
At any rate, I don't think it's being used in that fashion, so to speak. Uh, no swinging singles over there. Um, we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator that we grant the app, the request for site plan waiver. This also is not really directly visible from anything. It's set way far back from Fuller Lane. It's set way far back from any kind of road. And there's intervening vegetation, including, uh, natural grasses that sit in, yep, you can see it there, that sit within the site. So, anybody have any questions or comments? Stephanie, this is yours.
I was going to take this one if her audio is not working right.
Well, I don't know. You, you'll let me know in one second.
You're good.
Resolution 2021-59, December 15th, 2021. Kenneth and Catherine Brisky, 68 Fuller Lane, site plan waiver. Whereas, whereas, where, oh, let me read the first one. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Kenneth and Catherine Brisky for the existing hot tub on their property located at 68 Fuller Lane. And, whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the existing hot tub as described in the building permit received by the Building Department November 19th, 2021, and per the request to the Planning Board dated December 9th, 2021.
Second, and Dexter?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 That was easy. Um, there's no other business, but before we adjourn, we were having a bit of a quick discussion about a holiday gathering at my place. Um, Ann and Rob are not positive they can make it, but I believe Victoria said she could do it Tuesday. Tad could, Cynthia could. Chris, are you available on Tuesday?
Not positive. I have a follow-up dentist appointment, so I'm not sure how that's going to go.
I, I do vote Monday, though, after the town board meeting, if possible.
You would prefer Monday after the town board meeting?
I mean, if that's, yes, that would be my preference.
Because you'll be in town.
Well, yeah, I won't be there for that, but I'll be out at another meeting. So this way I don't have to go home and leave.
She's going to be, she's going to be being with another planning board. You know, she could work with other ones besides us. So I'll send out another, I'll. I'll send out another email to see if Monday or Tuesday, which one of those two worked best. Because I'm fine with doing it after the, uh, meeting as well. Um, Councilman Kretnik did remind me tonight, I had not known. I thought that was the last town board meeting there would be, would be the 20th, but actually they scheduled one for the, for the following week. Neil, is that right? The 27th?
It's actually on a Tuesday, the 28th, because town hall is closed on the 27th.
Okay, so there'll be another meeting on the 28th. So that being said, I probably won't have to go to the meeting so I can have everything ready to go here, whatever people want to stop over. So I'll send out another email. In the meantime, um, I want to offer a special thanks to, because we don't always get to do that. I'm not even sure everybody here gathered knows this, but Anne Marie Hampson, who is actually technically TAD's secretary, but she and, as you know, Cynthia, kind of, and now with Serena, run everything between the two offices. Um, Anne Hampson is the one who does a lot of these waiver resolutions. It's taken a lot of the burden off TAD, so I want to give her a special shout out as well as we end the year. Otherwise, I want to just echo what I said earlier today. It's really, makes the job of being a chair, or this, the job you do as chair, a pleasure to be working with people who, as I said, have principles, integrity and dedication while still being able to laugh. So thank you all. I, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
I'll second that. And Dexter?
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. And, uh, thank you, Councilman Kretnik, for being our director this entire past two years. I'll be learning to navigate Zoom. Thank you again. It's been a pleasure. And I'll see everybody next Monday or Tuesday.
Sounds good.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.